Okay, this is Thursday, November 14, 2019. It is 7:00 PM. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Here in the city of Albernette, we do do the pledge of allegiance. We'll see if we have a... We're gonna have our electronic flag. If not, then we will use our regular one. We do have a moment here. We'll take a moment. For those of you present in the audience, we, like I say, we do do the pledge allegiance. You don't have to, but we ask that you stand as we stand and face the flag. I will lead us in the pledge allegiance as soon as it's up. We're gonna go the other way. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and ask the clerk to establish roll call for a forum, please.
Counselor Minton.
Present.
Counselor Sarason.
Here.
Counselor Shawn. Counselor Henrickson.
Here. Let the record reflect that we do have a forum to conduct business this evening. I'll go ahead and ask for approval of the agenda as submitted. Are there any changes, clerk, for the agenda?
There are none.
No changes to the agenda? I'll go ahead and ask for a motion to approve the agenda as submitted. Move by Sarason. Second by Minton. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries. The sheriff's report is on here. I don't see a Lynn County deputy, so we'll go ahead and leave that open until such time as a deputy arrives. If they do so, they may be busy this evening with the weather. And then we'll move on to item number six, which is the mayor's report. I do have a few items this evening. I wanted to recognize our veterans, with Veterans Day being on November 11th. Last year, as you know, we did do proclamation to recognize the veterans here in the city of Albernette. That proclamation holds again for this year, that we will continue to recognize them for November 11th. So we want to thank all the service people for their service to the country, past and present. So I want to make sure that I mention that as well. And then I want to remind council that we do have goals coming up for next month and into the beginning of next year. We'll address the... I just want that in your minds, to be thinking about that as we reassess what our priorities are gonna be into the next year, as well as budget is coming up. Employee reviews are also coming up for our full-time staff in December. I will get those assembled and make those available for council people to review. And then the last thing is, during the time for voting, I had an opportunity to visit with some citizens. And one of the items that continue to come up within the city, oh, every six months, it seems like, or so, is concerns about animals at large within the city. Whether that is just usually dogs running at large, or whether that is somebody walking their dog and failing to pick up after their pets. So this seems to be something that continues to come up. And the citizens that I was talking to had suggestions from either... Everything from more strict enforcement to maybe even a dog park or something like that. So several ideas were thrown out to be able to address that. So later on in the agenda, we have ordinance discussion for animals, but I did want to mention it also, so that those citizen comments were reflected for the record. That's all I have. I'd also have you be mindful of the issues that we may be facing with dogs running at large or not being picked up after. It may be less of an issue with the weather coming up, but I'm sure we'll face it again next year. We'll go ahead and hear from the council reports now. We'll start on my left with Councilman Minton.
Just a couple things, Guy. Good job with the snow.
Thank you.
A little early, but you're forgiven. For the citizens, if you can, get your vehicles off the street. I know what that's like. It's very helpful and it helps with efficiency. It's first-class bowling. And that's all.
Thank you, Councilperson Sarason.
At the last meeting, Steve, we had a discussion about getting a work order system in place for fire trucks. That is up and running. I will send you an email after this meeting. You'll have to set up an account. I'll walk through all that. And then Public Works, city clerk, and myself as administrator have access to all that. So it'll be good. We'll give it a run and see how it works. And just give me any feedback as you go through that. And then also, just so the council's aware, I have cross-trained Danielle on more of the website administration, so she's starting to take over some of that and expanding her responsibilities there.
Counselor Shawn.
I would like to reinform what you said about dog bed owners. I did not like to see somebody's dog using my front lawn as...
It's very aggravating, I know. I hear it a lot, really.
I see him scooped around there, you know?
Yeah, I totally agree. Other comments?
Yes, that's... Oh, my God.
Counselor Henrickson. All right, hearing the... Having heard the council reports, then we'll go on to item number eight, which is citizen comments. There are two types of comments here in the city of Albernette. We hear both agenda and non-agenda items. This is the time for the agenda items. If you have any comments, the public does, for agenda items, you can go ahead and state your name and address clearly for the record. You have up to five minutes to make any comments for agenda items. Is there any comments for agenda items from the public? Okay. Hearing none, then we'll go ahead and move on to non-agenda items. Again, you'll have up to five minutes to address the council for any non-agenda items. Just state your name and address clearly for the record. You have up to five minutes to make any comments for non-agenda items. Mr. Hill, I know who you are. I know where you live. We'll go ahead and move past that. Go ahead and make any comments you might have. Be happy to hear.
Well, this is about the Baines tree.
Yes, sir.
You killed the tree up on Muthard.
I didn't personally kill anything, but go ahead.
The city did, when they did that project.
Okay.
The tree died out. You plainly saw that, that it was dying. But the people chose to take that thing down.
The property owner you're referring to?
Pardon?
You're referring to the property owner, Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Chose to take that down while it was safe to take it down, being such a large tree.
Okay.
And I thought that was good advice, so I went up there and watched the procedure. And when I did, this tree was dead. I mean, this was really the old thing, to take it down this year, because it would come in the area of unsafe to have taken it down another year from now.
Okay.
And I did that. So anyway, the town has talked about coming forth, stepping up to the plate because of the putting in the street. They killed the tree. They were gonna help the homeowner. Now, this is over to you. This is up to you guys. My other thing is the tripping issue of my house. I still have a big step where you put in that piece out there. And I still think that you should use a little discretion when you plow snow. There's no reason to plow snow onto the sidewalk with a snowfall, such as what we've had.
Okay.
Okay? Now, when you come by and plow this stuff, plow all the ice and stuff onto the sidewalk, it freezes. Not only is it an issue for the people walking, it's an issue for the people to get it off of the sidewalk. And I'm thinking, when you go out there and clean it off best you can, and it's still not gone after the next day, this is a problem. Should be brought to your attention. A little slower, you can roll that snow onto the shoulder, which is where it needs to be anyway, to melt, go into the drains. And I think that the homeowners likewise try to plow theirs out there, so there's a clean sidewalk.
My only comment to that, Mr. Hill, would be, I live on Donald Drive. And looking at Muthard, which is right over there, I think the distances are probably similar from the road to the sidewalk. I live at the end of the street where heavy snow would be plowed, because the snow would come all the way to the end of the street. I've never had snow, and I've been there 20-some years, that made it from the street onto the sidewalk. Now, there's a couple people in this room that have plowed snow for the city.
I have pictures.
Okay, no, okay. I'm not calling you a liar. I'm just making a comment. There are people that have plowed snow for the city, a couple of them in the room, I believe. And so I'll refer your comments to our current public works director. Does it occur that snow gets up to the sidewalk?
On that street, the sidewalks are closer to the curb than most of the streets in town. And it's possible, yes, that the snow could make it to the sidewalk.
I have some snow clear across the sidewalk into the front yard.
It really depends on the situation. Yeah, I can't crawl down your street and get everybody cleaned, so I could try and go a little slower.
Okay. Then your comments are so noted, and we'll make our best efforts to avoid the snow on the sidewalk, if at all possible.
Well, a lot of the problem is your equipment. It's all passion. This is county equipment. It isn't city equipment.
No, it's not. Okay.
I would like to respond to that.
Sure.
What do you mean it's county equipment? What's county about it?
It's what they use for snowplows in the country.
I've never seen the county use a pickup with a snowfall, ever. And that's what we use.
We don't use one here in town, either.
What do we use, though? I'm curious.
I think you have a larger snowplow mounted on a larger unit. I don't know. I didn't get up and watch the snowplow go by, see who was doing it or what they were doing. I could look back and see what went on and what they were doing, but it would take me some time to review this.
To the best of my knowledge, we have two pickups with snowplows on them. Is that correct?
Yep. One's an F-250.
Is that all you use?
F-250 and an F-50. Most of the time, it's the F-50 with a 10-foot blade on it, which the county would laugh at.
Yep. It's not heavy enough at all, miles to hit it.
And...
Your other concern about the snow going onto the sidewalk, I understand that's... It's not ideal. The problem with Muthard Street is the right-of-way is so narrow. We widen the street, which leaves less room for snow. Therefore, if he slows down, which I agree, perhaps he should slow down, now you need to understand, the snow will not get up over top of the curb. It absolutely won't.
Then your street will shrink.
Yep. And that's fine.
It does anyway.
If that's what you want, then that's what will happen.
That's shot. It shrinks.
By the end of the winter, it does. But if we don't push it as far back as we can at the beginning of the snow season, then it shrinks really fast.
I'm just trying to let you know that that's what's going to happen. Your street will be narrower.
That's what happens every other year.
Okay.
I go out and personally clean after you plow.
So do I.
Stack it. Very few people do. I go out and stack it, make room. I try to get it back to the curb where this thing can do what Mother Nature is supposed to do, melt the stuff running down the curb. Anyway, I'm over my five minutes.
That's all right, Mr. Hill. Do you have any other comments?
Well, no. This is not important.
Okay.
This tree issue was something that really ought to be addressed. I don't feel it's the homeowners' have to come down here and beg for money. I think it's the city that came through and put in this tree. And when we confront it, you said you would step up to the plate and take care of this if the tree died.
I understand, Mr. Hill.
The tree died.
I agree also. Your five minutes are up, and then I would encourage the homeowner to come next time if they want to talk about the tree. So I understand your comments. Thank you for giving them.
Well, no. It was... It's kind of the...
Okay. Very good. We'll move on with the agenda. The written reports now from the fire department. We have the fire chief here. We'll go ahead. We have your written report. We've had an opportunity to review it. Do you have other comments, other than what's in your written report, chief?
The only other thing I was pressed on, we need to find the Crystal Street.
I'm waiting to hear about the one behind the clinic.
Okay.
And then Leland Millard has one, but that's gonna be a booger. It's, well, it's super tall, and they trimmed all the branches off the bottom. I think it would work, but it's gonna take some equipment.
Yeah.
I don't know that I can... I don't know. I gotta assess it, but I was kind of hoping to get this one, maybe.
Okay.
But if you got any more ideas?
I asked Doug and Burn again, but I haven't heard.
Okay.
I told us last year that was the last tree, so...
Yeah, that's what I... That's why I was looking elsewhere, so...
Yeah. I just thought of that yesterday.
Other comments? Public Works, we have your written report as well. I know you have some other comments besides your written report. Go ahead.
It's very brief in the report, but we did get our draft NPDES permit, which is our wastewater permit. And we've been running on an expired permit for about four years now, which is kind of commonplace, but we have no changes, which is excellent news. No monitoring changes, no... Nothing. So we can just continue business as usual. It should be, when they send it, a five-year permit. Who knows where it might go after that? It could be expired for another four after that, before we get anyone. Who knows? But it's good news that we don't have to do any other treatment or increase anything. We're just not gonna have to change a thing, not even buy new testing equipment or anything. So it's good news. That means our system is working, is what I wanted to say.
You said they're five-year?
Yeah, it should be five. I think they're issuing a five-year permit. It doesn't say that on the draft, but...
All right. Any other comments? All right, then we'll move on to the clerk's report. I should've said something during my comments. Thank you for all your work lately on the items, especially preparing all our reports that are due by December 1st, so go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to see if there was any interest from council on attending either the Budget Workshop and/or the Municipal Leadership Academy. I kind of... I think I had it in an email, and I just don't know if anybody had time or interest in attending, so I can get registration here.
These dates are...
The Budget Workshop is next week. It's next Thursday, the 21st. And then this MLA Leadership... The Municipal Leadership Academy has different dates. There's different parts to their program. But it's here for a city of its own, so I just wasn't sure if anybody had any interest in attending either the...
I have interest in attending the Budget Workshop, but Thursday at, I think it was 10:00 AM, doesn't really work.
Yeah, and I... Okay. I can look and see if they have other... I think they have other dates. I don't remember if anyone fall outside of daytime hours, but I can let you know if there are. I don't know where they would be at, but I can find out for you.
All right.
Would you make sure this information is made available to Councilman Bozenberg at LAC as well?
Yep.
I went to the budget meeting last year. Joe and I went to it. It's where it's formalized.
Yeah.
It explains it.
Yeah, and they get some updates. There's a new regulation for the budget that we'll have to do an extra... There's an extra hearing required, an extra publication, so...
You're attending both, you said?
I'm doing the Budget Workshop. I'm not attending the Leadership Academy.
All right. Are you going to anything?
I wasn't planning on going to either. I should go to the Budget Workshop if everything is working smooth. I may attempt that, for sure.
Very good. Any other comments?
No.
Okay. All right, then we'll move on to number 10, approval of the consent agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda?
I did have one bill added to add. I received it today. It's from...
Cleaver. What is that for? How much?
Finishing putting the rock on the shoulder on the overlay on Norris Street.
And that is an amount of $345.36.
Councilman Shawn's getting an opportunity to review that.
Yes, I have signed up already.
It's approved. All right, very good. Any other changes?
I updated the claims report that I had in the initial packet. The amount for Keystone was incorrect. I had included an invoice from the previous month, so I deducted that amount. The Keystone Lab amount is $72.50, and that sheet is updated as well.
All right, let the record reflect that. You're good with that, too. Any other changes?
No.
All right, council, you've heard the changes as submitted. Hearing that, I seek a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So move.
Move by Shawn.
Second.
Second by Henrickson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries. All right, we'll move on to new business. First item on there is the election results. In your package, you have an opportunity, I'm sure you've all heard by now, but you'll have an opportunity there to review the election results. You can see that the top election... Big congratulations to Councilman Minton, who was on the ballot and had a sweeping victory. So congratulations and thank you for...
Thank you. I actually forgot to say in my report, thanks to the citizens for getting out of voting.
Yes, so congratulations on your reelection. It's good to have you for another term. And then we have write-in campaigns. So we have Councilman-elect Bozenberg in our audience, so congratulations to you. It'll be good to have you back with council and all your experience that comes with it. We hate to lose Josh, but thank you for doing your term. We'll recognize you officially next month as well. And then Councilman Shawn, who tried to get away, but it didn't work. I told you, you just... You can't get... I told him it's like the mafia. You just don't get out. That's it, you know?
There's only one way out.
So... But those were the top write-ins. You can see, if you have the official list, or you can go online and get it, too, that there were several folks that ran. And congratulations to those top two. So that will make up our 2020 council. Congratulations to those folks. Any other comments by council on election results? All right, then we'll move on to item number B. This is an electronic sign request. This is kind of a joint effort, but I believe it's gonna be city-driven. I don't know as much about this. It's probably what public works director would know, so I'll turn that over to him.
Lions Club for a couple of years... Lions Club purchased and installed the sign, this down by the fire station, current fire station, several years ago, and maintained it and took care of it, put the messages up. For a few years now, they've been discussing maybe upgrading to an electronic sign, so it'll do a little bit more and be a little bit more noticeable. And finally, one of our members went out and got a quote from... And this quote is from Media Quest, but a four-by-six sign, which the current sign is four-by-eight, but a four-by-six sign would be $12,500 for a... They would basically use the sign that's there, build a framework to hold the electronic panels, put it in. It wouldn't be real fancy. It'd be a single color. It would not scroll, but you could put several messages, up to 18 messages, and time how long they are up on the sign. So if you had three or four things going on, you could flash it for four seconds and then move to the next one for four seconds, et cetera. Just trying to be more noticeable and have more capacity. Lions Club realizes they probably could not tie into that monetarily by themselves. Also, an electronic sign is gonna need to be insured, because $12,500, or 14-something if you went to four-by-eight, so it stayed the same size. Anyway, only the one quote, so this is just in the beginning stages. The discussion led towards, could we partner with other people in community groups, et cetera? It's been brought up to the foundation, and the foundation is considering and thinks they can possibly put funds from their gala towards a project like this. The Lions Club definitely would put funds towards this project. And then when it came time to talk about, it'll be a little larger electrical draw than just turning on the two light bulbs. And also the insurance. The conversation went to, would the city be interested in partnering and basically probably actually owning this sign if we're gonna insure it and provide power for it as a city?
It's on city property, right?
And it's on city property, then, you know, maybe it becomes a city-owned project with donations coming from these other groups to help fund it, with the hopes that the city might fund a portion of it as well. We talked about also contacting the Diamond Club. Don't know if they have the funds available. Also asking the Historical Society if they could help at all. There are routinely events from the churches, both churches on that sign. Maybe ask if they're willing to throw a little bit in and truly make it a community sign. And so anything going on in this town that was happening could be put up. The school already has a sign, electronic sign displaying their events, and they really don't have room to put anything... There's enough school stuff going on. They have no room to put community events up. So that's the thought process. This is just to get it in your head, so you can think about it. I guess I would ask that it would be on next month's agenda, and we'll get some more info. Get another quote from a different company, at least one. See what kind of help the foundation might be. Have the Lions Club pin down how much we feel we could put towards the project and see if the city is willing. But I know you're just getting hit with it for the first time, so wanted to tell you what the thought process was.
Council, level of interest on this, is something you want to pursue or not?
I'm not against it. Like you said, a lot of those organizations' events are on the sign, and, you know, we'll see. We'll see what kind of donations we're talking. I can't imagine insurance would be... I guess I don't know.
If you're willing to go forward and ask Chris, does that... Would that increase our insurance, our coverage level? Municipal insurance policies are so different than other policies that a lot of that stuff doesn't affect it that much. Some things do, but I can ask her if it would be a large increase in insurance. And also even probably find out a power draw type scenario for it, if it's a big power user or not.
I imagine it's not. It's probably LED.
I'm sure it's all... I know it's all LED, but yeah, I doubt it takes much.
So there's a... Is there electricity there anywhere?
Oh, yeah, because there's lights on it already.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah. And it's... This unit would be an app on a cellphone to change it.
Bluetooth, but something like that.
Yeah. Just gotta be within 300 feet of it, the way it sounded. 200 feet. So...
I posted a request to the website for all the things in the community, so I think it'd be great to have another place to advertise that. My only concern, and maybe the actual sign companies, is because the school sign would be in line of sight, and then also the bank has theirs, I just want to make sure it's not gonna be too busy in that particular area, so they may be able to help assess that for us and recommend even text colors or things like that that might help alleviate.
Yeah.
Because I would be in favor of it. I mean, I think there's enough organizations that could be put to use on it, that it shouldn't cost anybody a bunch.
Well, and even the... Even our city council meetings could be put on that sign.
Fire department fundraisers.
Fire department fundraisers.
I mean, as I say, there's enough.
Yep.
I mean, as I say, there's enough, and it is on city property and stuff, so it would be expected to get, I don't know.
I think it's, I think it'd be good for the community, it's, the sign that we currently have, you put one thing on there, it's not really more to, so.
Yeah, and they split, one side has one thing, one event advertising, the other side has the other advertised, to try and just get two messages up where you could roll multiples.
And honestly, is, people look at that, I mean, I think about the school sign, and we get, I don't know how often Teresa gets it, but it's more often than not, she'll get a call if something is not right, or a question because of the sign, you have this as a time.
We're going to have to say Kenny Andrews off.
Yeah, yes. One member who quite enjoys putting the letters up, he's against the sign, but that's only one of the entire Lions Club.
Can you give him the app?
Yeah.
Sounds like there's interest in looking into it pending the financial obligation, you'll figure that portion?
Yep, I'll help the Lions Club.
Danielle, would you add it to next month's agenda pending financials?
Alright, thank you. Alright, item number C, employee health dental insurance plan renewal, if you take a look in your packet, and Danielle, tell me if I'm reading this wrong, but this is the January 1, 2020 estimates, not estimates, what they are for the, from Acumen Advisors, it looks on the left side, you'll see the 2019 benefits, and then on the right side, you'll have the 2020, it looks like a 12.25 increase. Are you wanting approval of this, I think it's negotiable, right?
Um, it's not, yeah, this is our.
So we can dislike it all we want, this is what it's going to cost us starting January 1?
Yeah, and I did reach out to a couple other policy carriers, just to see if there was any differences in rates, but we had asked to stay with Wellmark, we like the coverage and the benefits that we have, and basically, because we're with Wellmark right now, any other insurance company is going to only be able to give us the same rate that we already have with Wellmark, so it doesn't really matter who we go through for the insurance, but yeah, this is our renewal, this is our cost, so we just, we need to.
Our rates expire in December, right? So I mean, we don't do it now, we have to do something in December, it doesn't really matter, but you're seeking action on this tonight?
Yeah, the, our renewal, we have to get this signed and back to them before the December meeting.
Okay, so it's tonight. Alright, so you've got, it's in your packet, you have an opportunity to look at it, I guess your options are to approve it tonight, or seek a new insurance company, so what's the pleasure, councilor?
I make a motion, we approve the new insurance rates.
Alright, insurance rates approval from, a motion by Saracen. Second by Hendrickson, any discussion on this? Okay, 12.5% increase. Yeah, we're going to by roll call, it's, it's pending, so this is around by roll call.
Counselor Henderson?
Hi.
Counselor Sean?
Hi.
Counselor Saracen, or Counselor Menson?
Alright, let the record reflect, it passed with one councilman not present. You'll go ahead and get that renewed?
Yes.
Alright, very good, thank you. Alright, and we'll go ahead and move on then to item D, the lift station pump, discuss repair and replacement, we'll go ahead and, Public Works with you, explain this one for us, please.
Yep, the Homa pump, it's a, the brand Homa, is the pump that was bought several years ago as a spare, it got put into service about a year ago, and it's failed already. I pulled it out and put the, the last KSB that we bought in, in its place, it is repairable to the tune of twenty-six-hundred and some odd dollars. I asked for a quote for a new KSB, because we have two KSB pumps that both went years before they needed any work whatsoever, this Homa lasted one year before it is, needs repair, and he, and I got that quote, it was for seventy, I don't have that right in front of me.
Seventy-six-twenty.
Seventy-six-twenty, he called to ask if, what we wanted to do, I said I had to run it in front of council, he said would it help if I can get you a credit for your old pump, I said of course, so he shot back the note that they would basically give a thousand dollar credit for the Homa, and, which would bring the price of the new KSB to sixty-six-twenty. My recommendation would be to buy a new KSB as our spare because of the longevity, and also, the Homa is wired differently than the KSB, so if I have to put that Homa in, I gotta, I gotta tear it all apart in the junction box and, and wire, because it's a two-cable system, and I have to follow the schematic. If I put a KSB in, I just run the wire through and match up exactly what was off of the old one onto the new one, that's kind of a convenience item, but it's still, usually it's crappy weather when you're putting a pump in, and it's raining on you and whatever, so, I think in the long run, it would be a better deal for us to have three KSBs rather than that one off-brand.
So your reckon, your recommendation is to replace, not repair?
Yes.
For the cost benefit?
Yes.
This Homa had no warranty, I mean, one year service.
No, because it was purchased it long enough ago, it was.
It's out on the shelf.
It's out on the shelf, and I asked if that caused it, and there were, there was seal failures, but he said the seal was still soft, it just failed, it let water into the electrical part of the motor, and that's what stopped it, so, he didn't feel like it was, it just wore the seal out in one year's coverage, so.
What's the difference between your cost of?
Sixty-six-twenty versus twenty-six?
Well, yeah, you deduct your, which is going to cost you, rebuild the other one.
Oh yeah, sixty-six-twenty minus twenty-five, it's four thousand bucks.
Seven-six.
Yeah, yeah, because we need to do one or the other, we either need to repair the Homa, or we need to buy a new KSB to put it in.
We got budget for either option.
Yeah, we could go ahead, I think we should get doing one other thing, but I was led on information, I think it'd be a good idea, if we took and had somebody pump the sand and grab a lot of the lift station once a year, because that would increase the life of our pumps.
We had Roto-Rooter in three weeks ago, and cleaned the lift station, the grease had built up over the years, and I tried chemicals and they weren't working, and so we had them come and clean it all out, and they did pull a fair amount of sand off the bottom of the lift station, when they do, some other towns that have heavier load than we do, they get significant sand off the bottom of the lift station floor, just because they take in more stuff, and so there's more grit, so, so it's clean now, but probably it should just be a once a year.
I think it's a one-year thing, I'd have to think about having maintenance to that, because sand and seals don't go too well together, they're not a good fit.
Does Roto-Rooter have, like, your sewer main maintenance, do they, do they, like, contract those things out with cities, you know?
Oh yeah, yeah, they'll, they even, this Roto-Rooter has even stepped up, and they do sewer main lining.
Oh, right.
Yeah, so they kind of have become the all, an all-inclusive sewer type of deal, they can basically do it all, from small service lines all the way up to, to ten- and twelve-inch mains they can line, and obviously, they have the back trucks for cleaning and all that stuff, they've become quite proficient, so. They, they will get, if we decide to do the last little bit of sewer lining in the next couple of years, they will be included in the quote list, because I didn't realize they did that the last time we lined, so.
Okay, so you have the estimates in front of you, Public Works Director is recommending item A, seventy-six-twenty minus one thousand for the, for the turn-in of the existing pump, sixty-six-twenty, entertain a motion if that's the pleasure to council?
So moved.
Moved by Saracen.
Second.
Second by Menson, any other discussion on this?
That, no.
Any other? No, no other? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, proposed no, motion carries, would you document the certain number on the item that you turned it back in from the city inventory? Alright, and we'll go ahead and move on to the next item, it's a resolution, it's in your packet, resolution 11, 2019-01, the annual urban renewal report, you can go ahead and pull the other one too, the resolution 11, 2019-02, the annual TIF certification, these are required for the budgetary items that, for the end of the year, I believe these have already been filed.
These have not yet, the annual financial report, which was included with the consent agenda, has been filed.
Okay, very good. Alright, so resolution, the first one is 11, 2019-01, you've had an opportunity, it's in your packet, you've had an opportunity to review those, is there any concerns with this particular resolution? Okay, then I would seek a motion for the approval of resolution 110, or 2019-01.
So.
Moved by Menson.
Second.
Second by Hendrickson, I will need this one by, or any discussion, I will need this one by roll call also.
Counselor Menson?
Aye.
Counselor Saracen, by Counselor Sean? Counselor Henderson?
Alright, let the, passes, let the record reflect, it passed with one council member not present. We'll move on to the next resolution, which will be also in your packet, it is resolution 11201902, the annual TIF certification, any comments on this before we move forward there?
Um, we had some TIF funds sitting that were unused from previous requests, I had, the clerk from Walker was here, and she helped me with this report, and we talked to the Iowa Department of Management, and so this year, we're actually not certifying to receive any TIF funding, because we're going to use what we have, so that will be a benefit to when we do budget this year, we won't have to certify that on the budget.
So that's the zero dollar on the?
Correct, and, uh.
Twenty-one geos?
So, yeah, and then we're decertifying, we have to decertify the amount that we're going to use from the funds that we have sitting in that fund, so that's what the Form 3 is, we're decertifying that amount that we're using from the previous funds we have.
Very good. Any questions on the resolution 112019-02 for the TIF report, or certification?
Do you know, do we owe neighbor any more money?
We do, um, there, on the annual urban renewal report, the, the new edition, he has ten years to request the rebates, and we haven't received any requests so far.
I mean, do we owe him any from past?
No, the, the other TIFs are certified.
I thought, I think we're all paid up.
We have one current open, and he has ten years to request TIF.
Oh, what are you saying, it's the older part of the edition, not the new one?
The old TIF.
Yeah, the old ones are expired.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's what I thought, but I just wanted to reassure myself.
Other questions on TIF? Alright, then I'd seek a motion to approve resolution 112019-02, the, the resolution on the TIF indebtedness certification.
So moved.
Moved by Sean?
Second.
Second by Saracen, any other discussion? Yeah, by roll call, please.
Counselor Henderson?
Aye.
Counselor Sean?
Hi.
Counselor Saracen?
Aye.
Counselor Menson?
Aye.
Let the record reflect, it passed with one council member not present, thank you. Alright, then we'll go ahead and move on to the library contract, and discussion of the current contract, it's in your packet, and I know you've got this in your previous reports, I'm sure you've had an opportunity to review this, this is something that we've talked about in the, the past, in the library contracts in the class, and I'm going to turn this over to Danielle to give you some further information on this, and what our potential options are going to be, I know she's worked on this extensively, I have been present for some of these meetings with the library services contract, I can tell you that, as the mayor, my official stance on this is to do the will of the council on what they want to do, and for what is best for the citizens of Albernette. As citizen of Albernette, I can tell you, I think we are way overcharged for library services, you can see the contract there, and looking at page two, you can see by, at the completion of what they want to get us to, at $26,000 a year for library services, I think is outrageous, but again, that's my citizen side giving my particular comments on it, so I'll turn it over to Danielle, and she can give you some further details on where this contract currently says.
So, you have a copy of the current contract, and as the mayor mentioned, at the end of the contract, which goes through FY 2023, will be at $26,000 a year for library service, that is to allow, based on a per capita rate, to allow all the Albernette city residents to have an account with the metro library network. I've done some research, and I've talked to other cities, there are a few cities within Lynn County that currently don't have a library and contract with other cities, they pay a substantial amount less than we do because of the contracting library that we contract with, so by, per IO code, the city is supposed to provide a certain amount of funding for library service for residents. We met with the library director from Marion Library, and the city manager from the city of Marion, and we, the mayor and I, let them know that we thought the contract amount was higher than what the city could pay for in the future, I mean, we can afford it, but we just don't think it is an expense that makes sense in comparison with our budget, and we asked them to, to look at potentially decreasing that amount, and they came back and said they were not willing to, or, they weren't willing to negotiate the contract rate to anything less than what it currently is. So we're, we had a meeting with the school, they are doing a bond initiative in March, and part of that bond initiative is to put in a new K through 12 library and media center. There are a few cities in the state that share library services with their school when they don't have their own library, so that is a potential option for us to look into. I just kind of wanted to start the discussion and see what your thoughts were, and what direction the council wanted to go with this.
Pleasure to council.
First question, do you, we don't need action on this, rather, other than?
Correct.
Just to kind of determine direction, and as a discussion of, are we using our finances responsibly? There's not a contract coming, we have no deadline that?
Yes.
That's approaching, okay.
Correct, yeah, our current contract goes through 2023, either party per the contract can dissolve it at any time with a certain amount of notice, but we do have the contract in place, so, everything's okay there, there's nothing that needs to be done, it's just wanting to gauge the interest of the council and how to proceed. One other thing I wanted to say is that I have also contacted the county, our previous contract, you can look at it in the packet, was based upon the same rate that the county pays as a per capita rate for library service for the rural residents, our, our current contract, the metro library network is wanting it to be more in line with what their residents pay as a per capita rate, and so we had asked to pay what the county pays as a per capita rate, because it's significantly less than what the per capita rate is for the metro library network, and they said that that was not an equitable amount for the city of Albernette to pay, so I reached out to the county to see if there's any kind of option of contracting with the county, so that we would determine an agreeable, equitable amount with the county, and then we would potentially give those funds to the county, and then they could include that in the amount of funding that they provide to all of the libraries within Lynn County. I don't know if it's an option, I just started a conversation as an option or something to look into.
So I have a few comments, as it comes to considering the school, first of all, for the metro library, they have a lot of amenities, I mean, you can go to any of the locations, they've got the online libraries, I appreciate what they have to offer, their different programming, those types of things, I also don't want to put a burden on the school, and I don't mean to let you judge, I assume it would mean increased hours, because they'd have to be open to the public outside of school hours, summer hours, those types of things, so I don't want to put that burden on them. With that said, if we're going to be charged the same as the metro area cities, I believe we should have some of the same amenities they do, there, I would demand a book drop and make it easier for our citizens, maybe it's something, can we get some kind of checkout station that's on their network, where we could actually have the books brought here, and they can check them out from here, rather than having to go into one of those facilities? I feel like if they're charging us that same rate, then we should be afforded some of those conveniences, because as a Marion resident, I potentially could walk to the Marion Library, that's a guarantee it's not going to happen from Albernette, so, that's my two cents. I know that you've mentioned they have the mobile library, and so maybe that's something that's going to be, they're working on, if they can deliver those books out here, I also think we could work on some kind of membership drive within the community, and encourage people to get their cards, to use them, it's either an awareness issue, or it's just not something people are necessarily interested in, I think we'll get that gauge if we get the word out too, so. I know it's not a decision by any means, but those are some of the things that I've kind of had top of mind.
And the director from the Marion Library Network that we met with had stated that they are more than willing to come up here and talk to the council and the public, and to, you know, explain all the benefits that they're able to provide, and they, she also said that they would be willing to entertain a book drop, or, you know, potential other outreaches, and then that mobile library unit, since we contract with them, she said that that would be something that we could talk to, having it come onsite to the city, so there is, there are options there that we could definitely discuss.
I think if we could add some conveniences, we may see increased usage, I'm still not saying that the, the spend is worth it necessarily, but if, I feel if we can get usage up, we're going to garner that support.
What, did they give you a reason that it wasn't equitable? For example, I'll just use myself and Brian Martz, who does, or Jason Martz used to, he's paid his, if he had to pay it, I'm guessing he doesn't pay it, he's a rural, and we pay thirty-eight dollars per citizen, so what would be that mile difference in where we live is the, is their, their reasoning for equitable, because we're at town? I guess that would be my, and I, I, somebody who's a library a lot, I agree with you, it would be very challenging to duplicate those services, I just, I just am concerned about their unwillingness to look at it globally a little bit, instead of just, no, this is what we're going to do. Because, for those people who are half a mile out of town, that, again, if they had to pay for a library card.
Well, but that equity comes back, I, I don't, I should mention, the county subsidizes, so in the end, the, the metro network is getting the same amount per capita, it's just the residents aren't paying, and the county subsidizes, so that's.
One other thing to recall too, is we have no representation in that library network whatsoever, none.
Like, on a board, as a board?
Yeah, as the board, the board makes all the decisions, and the board is driving this, no, we're not going to give you a, a break, we don't have any representation in that, you know, all we are is a, is a customer of theirs, and it's a take it or leave it attitude, a hundred percent take it or leave it attitude.
One thing I want to say, you know, too, is that I would do, like, pay what the county pays for a person to use it.
I'd be willing to pay what the, what the rate that they want us to pay if it was per use. So if we have 200 library cards and we know that, then we could, that's fine with me. But for us to pay for every single citizen
I agree.
who may not use that service, and I get there's some other costs. So even if our cost was a little bit higher because of that, if, if we, even if we did a membership drive and we got to 30, 35% of the people in Albernett had a, had a library card.
They won't allow.
I understand that. I'm saying
I tried that.
I'm saying that, that as we're talking about things that are palatable to, to our community, that would be palatable to me. I, I can understand that. It's hard for me to say that, that we should be paying the kind of money that they want us to pay in, in three years from now. And that's again, coming from somebody who uses that significantly.
The choices are either pay what they want. You seek your own library or library services, you know, organically. You have, get your own library in town or you go try to find somebody else to get library services from.
I will say of option B, we're not going to beat this price. We, we couldn't create and support a library for $9,000. Especially Danielle's explained some of the requirements as far as having to have a licensed librarian and all those things. So I mean, it's A or C based on what you just outlined.
I do want to mention with our meeting with the school, it's not as big a burden as you might think because right now they're paying for a librarian and she only is putting in what?
One day a week.
One day a week? And so it would be actually, if we're paying the school for some of these library services, it's an avenue for them to get that librarian there more because it would pay, help to pay for her salary. And so it's not, it's definitely not set in stone and the, and the bond issue would have to pass. And the building would have to be built. So don't get me, it's not a magic bullet, but it's, it was met with, with, you know, we could probably make this work, not, and actually it was wanted, not necessarily, okay, we'll try and help you out.
But clearly understanding the amenities wouldn't be the same, of course.
Oh.
Absolutely. The usability we're getting, the usage right now, I mean.
And knowing that we would, as a school or community library, you'd have to have some of the online options and some, I mean, some of those things. So understanding that that was not a, like, we get it's not the same.
And keep in mind, I think there's, most people are not paying this. I think there's two cities in Lynn County that actually pay them.
It's, the city of Albernett and the city of Robbins are the only two cities that currently contract with the Metro Library Network.
Everybody else has done something different. The city of Coggin maintains their own library and their, our size is smaller. And they, and their librarian doesn't work all five days. I think they're only four out of five. And I believe their budget is similar to what we'll pay at the maximum and maintain that library. So it's not like everybody in Lynn County is paying into the, you know, I'll say the Marion Library, because that's what we're going through, but it's CR Marion Hiawatha. Everybody else has sought another option other than two cities.
My other concern is, these are the numbers we have now. There will be an increase over time. That's how every contract works. So we're looking at, you know, in 2023 where we lose our discount, from there it's only going to go up.
Well, because at that point as well, we're, I mean, our perk, our number of residents, yeah, will have increased. And they're building, they're building new libraries and doing new development. So I'm sure the expense for them is not going to, you know, go down by any means or stay the same. I will say that if you do a little research, the, the city of Palo, when the Metro Library Network was looking at these contracts with cities that contract with them, it used to be Albernett, Robbins and Palo about four, I think it was four years ago. The city of Palo had the same situation where they were looking at budgetary numbers and they said, this is too much. We don't, we don't think this is something we can afford. They went to the Metro Library Network and had asked to decrease the contract amount and were denied that request. So they decided to dissolve their contract with the Metro Library Network. I think their contract was up and they just did not renew it. And they went and contracted with a smaller library in the city of Sheldonburg, which is in Benton County. And because the Metro Library Network at that point is saying that you are not paying equitable share now for library services or what they determined to be an equitable share for library services, they deny the city residents of Palo to have an account with the Metro Library Network. So I just want to put that out there as well is that no matter what we do, if we determined to another avenue and we pay a different expense, the Metro Library Network has the right to state that they say that, or the right to determine that if they don't feel we're paying an equitable amount for our library service and they would deny the people who currently have an account from continuing to have an account with their library. So I just wanted to mention that.
At least we attempted to even negotiate and say, hey, look, we'll pay it what our, near our current rate or the county rate, $20,000 a year for the next two years until we can figure out what we're going to do here? Nope.
And I, I know they had said that they're, they would be willing to negotiate at the start of our new contract. But I think your, to your point, most of the time in that situation, the negotiation is going to be off.
Of course it is. So I think their library system is kind of under fire down there right now anyway. Lot of controversy.
They, they did initially say when we first started contact with the library director from Marion about this contract, I don't, I think she just facilitated the contract, I'm not sure. But they, she did mention that they would potentially be open to negotiating. But then once we talked to her and confirmed, they were not at all interested. And the contract states that when it's, when the contract ends, then it'll be negotiated based upon the
Current rates.
Right. So there's really not, and they, and I guess the reasoning behind that was they, the board had said that they felt they put a lot of work into revising this contract. And they felt that to allow us to have a lower rate would be to move backwards instead of moving forwards. And that whatever they did with our contract, they would have to do with their other contract is what they had stated and their other contract is with Robbins. I don't know why it has any bearing on our contract, but that's what they had stated.
Well, Bethany, Josh, myself, we all live bordering the county and close to or the aspect of it. So when I step across the north side of my yard, one foot, they're, that, that property owner is paying the lower rate. I step back on my side of my yard and I pay the higher rate, thousands higher. And, you know, that's, that's how they figure it.
And I get, and that's the same way with taxes and everything. I get that. But at the same time, this, this to me just, it's not a negotiation in 23, 24. It's, this is the new figures, here it is. It's kind of like the insurance thing we just talked about. You either do it or you can look for something else. And obviously we have a contract for a couple of years and we won't do anything with the school till March if that's an avenue we want to go down. We don't know what Center Point could offer as far as the library services because that's the same amount of, you know, travel time away for the most part.
I guess it's kind of the, the fact that we're in the city or something. But those property owners that border us to the south are closer to Marion or Hiawatha or Cedar Rapids than we are. And they're paying less for the same services. I mean, it's.
When we're not even sure the numbers they're giving us of Albernett users of the library are actually all living in town. I suspect some of those, they didn't ask them whether they lived in town or not. They just saw that Albert, that Albernett address is listed in the, in the listing. It might be someone who lives in Lafayette.
Are they, are they going by just the people that use the library? Are they going by for?
So we pay, so yeah, we pay for every resident to have the ability. They, they provided us with a list of the accounts that they have in their system for all the libraries. And when we looked at it, it was about 20% that had an account that they're saying live in the city of Albernett that are actively using their account within the last 18 months.
If you do that math, we're paying $138 per person that utilizes the library for you.
Assuming those are actually in-town residents that could be in county with an Albernett address.
Right, that is absolutely correct.
Just to throw some food for thought out there, there's a, the city of Walker is not that far away. They're a little bit bigger than we are. They have a contract with a different library in Lynn County. And their contract is totally different. It's with a different library. However, they pay $7,500 a year for their library service. The city of Walford has a library contract with another city in Lynn County. It's a different library. I think they pay just over $2,000 a year for their library service. The city of Prairieburg, which is a very small city, has a contract with a different library from Lynn County. They pay $300 a year for library service.
Now, I, I don't, I don't want to lament this all night, but refresh my memory. It's either Iowa Administrative Code or Iowa laws is you do have to tax for services. But I believe it says the minimum is like six bucks per person or something like that. It's very minimal.
6.75 cents.
Yeah, 6.75 cents. So they're right, we do have to tax for, for library services. But the amount they're making us tax for to pay this, because we're just passing on the cost to the citizens, is outrageous considering if we went by the Iowa law, we'd only tax the citizens a very small amount, which would lower everybody's taxes and say, here, here's your money, give us library services. But they're, what they're making us do and the amount that this impacts our budget is outrageous. But it's like, we live with it for some reason. I don't know. But we're getting, we're getting.
Well, and to be fair, it changed recently because they admitted they lost all their records in the thought of a weight. And so they just recently came back with this, these updated rates.
It did, I, it was like April 18th, I signed the contract. I know we had debated that time and there wasn't a good option for it. But it's, it's one of these things that continues to escalate. I knew we were going to have to address it. I attempted to address it and there, there is no negotiating with them.
And that's, that's disappointing to me.
So what, what are you looking for here with this?
I just want to know how, what the pleasure of the council is. Do you want us to continue looking at other options? Do you want us to continue to try to negotiate if there's any possibility of doing so? How do you want me to proceed? I don't want to waste time, but if you want us to just continue with the contract we have.
Well, status quo is, quo, status quo is to pay it. So the other two options are pursue our own library locally or look into a, a, some type of agreement with the school for library services. Or option B, look for outside services outside this city. Does that interest anybody on the council?
As far as looking at other cities that we can target with, is that what you're asking?
Yes, either looking for services outside the city as one option or looking for library services within the city. Does either one of those options interest anyone?
I, I wouldn't, I would not have a problem hearing what a place like Center Point could offer. Just that doesn't hurt anything to hear what they have to offer. As far as the school goes, we won't know anything there till March. At that point, you're still looking at probably 2022 before anything would be completed there. So you're still going to probably end up with this contract for almost the life of it. So in the meantime, I wouldn't.
We'd still have to plan for it.
Right, I wouldn't have a problem hearing what. And then my other question would be, when you spoke to the, the library, did you start to speak to any folks on the library board or was it the person from Marion?
The way that we were addressed, we met with the Marion Library Director and the Marion City Manager who then stated that she went back to the other two library directors from Cedar Rapids and Hiawatha. And then they had to address their board. And so we weren't, we haven't met with anybody on the board. We were just provided that correspondence back really by the director.
I'm not saying that would be helpful or not, but it may be worth the going to that level, especially if they know that we're going to pull a $26,000 contract at some point.
And I, I, the email I contacted them and said, could we attend your board? Could we have an open dialogue with Q and A back and forth? They won't, they won't allow that.
That speaks volumes.
Is that just because of the board or the Marion, whatever you want to call her?
Well, I'm, I'm sure it's, I'm sure it's a public meeting, but they won't allow the Q and, open Q and A back and forth that they're going.
I assume it'd be like here, though, you'll get five minutes to comment.
Yeah. You can probably make a quick comment or something like that. But they're not going to have an open Q and A in a public meeting like that.
That doesn't mean we can't contact them at home. I'm going to look up who's on their library board right now.
I swear there's somebody from Lafayette.
And I wonder too.
I'm just trying to, and I'm not saying you guys haven't done all that due diligence. I'm just trying to figure out if there are other options to, I mean, again, as Bethany said, to start having those amenities at those three libraries are wonderful. If there was any way to keep those, that, to me, that would be the ideal situation. It doesn't sound like that's even a possibility. So again, I'll say that I would be, I would want to hear, you know, and I know that I'm leaving here a month or so, but as even as a citizen, I'd be willing to hear about other options.
I agree. And the amenities are only appreciated by a small percentage.
I hope so.
We have proof of that. So yeah, I would agree. I know it's a ways out. I'd like to engage in a conversation with the school just to understand what that structure would look like if it became more of a public experience from a library. Because I also don't want to compromise any security. I mean, my children attend that school. So there's, there are a lot of, I think there's just a lot of factors if we go that route. But I would love to hear from other towns around the area and get their willingness and kind of understand.
I think when you had a dialogue with the school, they could accommodate that maybe with this initiative that's coming on next year that they could.
Yeah, especially because they're building, if there needed to be changes, they could build that into the plan now.
And I believe you looked into other areas that have, cities that have schools that do their library services and there, it's, I won't say it's common, but there were several that do that.
There are a few, yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry, a few, okay.
I'm sure it was a thoughtful discussion, Guy. Maybe you and I just need to catch up on that or whoever was involved in that.
Yeah, yeah, it just, it was, it was more positive than I thought it might have been actually while we had that, that meeting.
All right, is there anybody on the council that doesn't want to continue to look at alternate services? There you have it. All right, any other comments? I don't want to cut anyone off, but I do want to keep moving.
I have one more, Danielle. I know you've put hours into this, so thank you for taking in, understanding all the requirements, the regulations and really coming through us. I would really appreciate it.
All right, number 12, a building permit inspection services. I don't want to spend a lot of time on this. Is there any other questions based upon the open forum that was from six to seven?
I wasn't here to understand this.
It was a nonofficial, we didn't have a forum present, but you can, if you want, just for the record for our folks on YouTube, I can state that there were no citizens that were present for that. You didn't, you didn't miss a lot, but Danielle provide any more information on that forum? Provide it to him later, but anything else can use on that. All right, we'll move on to 12B. The ordinance, chapter 46, animals discussed with the, the ordinance. Just a couple of comments on this. There's two things in your packet on this. There's chapter 46, this is the new proposed ordinance. As you know, this came up, I think a couple of months ago. I missed the October meeting, but I believe it was in the August, or I'm sorry, the September meeting. The chapter 46, proposed, not approved, but this made changes where there were conflicts in our current animal, animal ordinance. And then the second thing is that Iowa code, chapter 20D, agreement between Albernett and Cedar Valley Humane Society. Couple of things I want to point out, if you set them right next to each other, I'll start with the Cedar Valley Agreement. On the second page, under part three, where it says 3A, the C language like agrees to accept any in part C may accept animals. You get over to the next page in part five, that they, it goes by their policies. And then here's the real portion of it that I want to talk about in part seven. The, they're set up generally as they will accept the animal, bring us the animal, get us the animal, accept the animal. It's, their language is that way throughout. And Guy can give his own comments on how we've dealt with animals in the past because he's done some of that. You get down to 7, 7D, field services. Albernett may request that the humane, or that the Cedar Valley Humane Society provide field services for animal pickup or cases of animal welfare, neglect, cruelty or aggressive biting investigation subject to field services call out fee. I'm not saying that they won't send somebody out. What I'm saying is that this 208E is generally designed for them to accept animals based upon them being provided that. Do you disagree with that?
No, to my knowledge, it's always been that if you wanted them to come, they would come. But in, I took two dogs down to them because I didn't feel like they were of any harm to me to travel in the vehicle and, and to avoid that cost. If they remember, I don't remember exactly what it is, but it was significant.
Yeah, their fee structure is animal care service 130 per animal, field call out service $75 per call out.
Right.
Yeah. Now, the, the problem we're going to run into is if we try to move forward with chapter 46 as submitted, it's going to start on page three. Number nine vicious animal. The definite, new definition of our vicious animal, which fixes our current ordinance because basically anyone that has a rottweiler or a The definite, new definition of our vicious animal, which fixes our current ordinance, because basically anyone that has a rottweiler or the American, whatever that other name is, plus a few other animals, basically automatically becomes a vicious animal and has to be destroyed. Unless it's under four months or something like that. So, that starts the first problem. If you get to the page right after that, section four point four six point six, and by the way, the vast majority of this came from codes that are a hybrid of codes between our current one and other cities that have been, already been approved for Iowa. It gets into animals running at large, and you'll see it refers to that problem that I talked about earlier. And then you get into four, the next page, four point four six point fifteen, vicious animals, part two. The duty of the animal control officer to impound any vicious animal. Number three, the animal control officer is in his or her discretion. Part B, the order to remove a vicious animal from the city by the animal control officer. Go to the next page, part D, after hearing, the council may affirm or reverse the order of the animal control officer, that's in the appeal process. Part F, fail to comply with the animal control officer. Four point four six point one six, animal shelter. It talks about the city veterinarian or the animal control officer. Anyway, I can go on and on. The problem that we have with chapter forty-six is it was designed that either our local veterinarian or, or that shelter would assist us, like most cities have, or we have to be completely dependent upon the Cedar Valley Humane Society. So, we either need to go back and revamp this particular contract to be in lockstep with our new ordinance, or one of these two documents has to be modified, which would basically take all the teeth out of chapter forty-six, or we need to redo this. Talking to Danielle, and she can speak for herself here in a minute, but it sounds like this is pretty standard language, and they may be resistant to changes, we don't know that yet because we haven't reached out to them. So, I think it's in the packet tonight, because we have to make a decision as to what we're gonna do either with this ordinance, whether we're gonna try to seek local services, and I don't think that our veterinarian wants to take this on with the housing and animal control portion of it, or we're gonna have to go back and seek a different contract with Humane Society. I think they probably will do it. I don't think it's a big secret that they've, that they do this for other cities in Lynn County, and that they've even offered these services to larger cities like Cedar Rapids before, who has its own animal control service. So, there it says, go ahead.
Yeah, you're correct, I received a copy of another agreement from another city that contracts with them, and it's basically verbatim the same language. So I don't know if they would be resistant to modifying it to match our ordinance or not. I haven't reached out to them to see, I'm just, I was stating that this seems to be their basic contract language. So I don't know if they would be open to that or not.
Again, we could modify chapter forty-six as submitted, but you basically remove everything that would have any teeth about being able to do anything with animals within that.
You hit my, one of my two questions is, who is the animal control officer? Because from the ordinance itself, it was unclear. Because my understanding of our agreement with Cedar Valley Humane Society is they don't enforce these things. They come, as we call them, to collect an animal versus.
So would it be a deputy?
A deputy would have the right to put down an animal that was vicious or attacking a person or something like that. They, they have the right to do that.
So wouldn't that be the animal control officer?
They won't take it on in that capacity. If you call the deputy and say, hey, I want you to go and determine whether or not that guy owns this dog, and it's a vicious animal, can you make that determination for us? They're gonna be like, no. The dog's attacking somebody.
Society do that?
I think they probably will. I think we could probably get them to do this, where they would act as an animal, an ACO officer and do that for us.
The one thing to be careful of, if, if we're gonna modify that agreement with Cedar Valley Humane Society, we have found the home for two or three dogs on our own, because they're perfectly tame and obviously someone's pet, and we figured it out and got them back. But the problem is, if someone, if anyone in this room who lives in town calls the Cedar Valley Humane Society and says, hey, there's a dog on Howard Street, I don't know who its owner is, they, that citizen, just by calling and saying they are a citizen of Albernent, would trigger Cedar Valley Humane to come up here and pick up that dog. And then it's the mandatory seventy-five dollar fee plus the hundred and thirty dollar fee, no matter what.
Who pays that?
And we pay that. And I don't think we have any mechanism to.
Unless the owner collects the animal, then they have to pay the hundred and thirty.
Thirty, but we still are stuck with the seventy-five.
My bigger concern is, you know, if I called to report a vicious animal, you know, will, will they come out and take care of that? I mean, we can educate on if you see a stray dog, and, and most people, you know, take a picture, put it online, let us know, that type of thing. So, I'm more concerned about their capacity to assist with reports of vicious animals.
They're, they're, the contract says they're not really supposed to do that. It says the Humane Society shall receive approval from Albernent prior to accepting an animal, and it gives a number for the city of Albernent during business hours. After hours, I guess it's kind of a gray area on what they'll do or how they'll react or whatever. But we need to clean that language up if that's occurring.
So if they're not supposed to do it, then law enforcement's not supposed to do it?
Law enforcement can act independently based upon the call for service, but if a citizen, ideally if a citizen and Albernent calls Humane Society and says, hey, I've got an animal here, it's a stray, it's on the loose, or whatever, or it's doing this or that, can you come get it? And they say, okay, where is it? And it's city of Albernent, yeah, okay, we have a contract with them. You know, we need to, we need to, or make the citizen pay for it themselves.
Okay, so my question would be, if you see a stray dog or a vicious dog, are you calling the Humane Society or are you calling the sheriff's department?
I guess it would, what do you consider, it's just my opinion, if it's attacking someone, I'd call the sheriff's department for a faster response, and they have the right to do whatever they want with the animal. But if this is a dog that is loose in town.
Isn't that what we're talking about here, though? The vicious animal?
I think that's the piece that's not addressed in our twenty-eighty, is how they would handle a vicious animal in accordance with our new ordinance.
But I think Charlie's saying they, they shouldn't be. And my, and I'm saying if it's a vicious animal.
Well, Charlie's saying the sheriff's department would come if there's an immediate threat. There are cases where, you know, if it's someone, it's back in its home, but now according to our ordinance, needs to be removed from that owner. I don't see the sheriff taking responsibility for that.
I see them taking responsibility a lot, a lot more than I see some dude from the animal control shelter.
The, the new ordinance does address law enforcement, that it, they have the right to, which they already know that. I mean, we didn't give them any special rights, but it does say that an animal control officer or law enforcement can take immediate action. It's under section four point four five, or four six point two oh.
I can remember reviewing the sheriff's, what do you call them, that report that we get, picked up dog.
Yeah.
Well, but that's ours, but they couldn't remove it from someone's home.
A dog bites Jinka, runs back to my house, and you call the Humane Society or whoever, and they are coming, they're gonna come get my dog from me, some guy from the Humane Society? I'm not letting that guy take my dog, no way, not a chance. So who's he gonna call to help me get that dog?
Oh, absolutely.
So I'm saying, what I'm saying is, wouldn't the animal control officer inherently with a vicious animal be a sheriff's deputy or some sort of?
But the sheriff would not remove the dog. They would be there to support the animal control. It's the same.
Good point.
My dad used to do repos. He'd bring the sheriff with him, so he was the repo officer, but he brought the sheriff as his assistant.
That makes it more, I get, I get it, thank you.
Yeah, and there's other, like she's saying, somebody that's harboring a vicious animal, or that has to determine whether it's a vicious animal, somebody that has an illegal animal within there, dogs that are running at large, lost dogs and things like that. I mean, there's a lot of things that the sheriff's department probably isn't going to touch in that particular case. Or that if they do pick up a dog and the dog has problems or is being shot, or that it needs to be housed or something like that, I don't think they're gonna get into that particular side of it, so.
So what needs to change on that, I'll tell you, would be the animal control officer?
I think that we need to reach out to Cedar Valley and see if we can modify this particular, this particular agreement. We can try to reach out to our local vet and see if they will take on any aspect of it. At the time that this was done, in September, we were facing a, a change in our veterinary service. Our, our doctor that was there was just leaving, we do have a new doctor, I can't think of her name, but maybe that they might be able to take on a, a portion of this. The reason it's in the packet tonight is because I don't think we want this to go stale. So, there it says.
Talk with Cedar Valley and get more info.
Have we talked with any other towns with similar ordinances as far as what they do for an animal control officer?
Well, I did get City Springville, and they do, was Cedar Valley Humane Society, I want to see what their contract looked like, and it is almost verbatim.
I'd like to see what their ordinance looks like, though.
Yeah, I haven't looked at their ordinance to see how it's different.
Good portion of this is taken from Center Point or Central City, at least fifty, forty percent. Some of this is still retained from our ordinances, and some of it is taken from another city. I mean, ours had nothing in there as far as livestock or mistreatment of animals and stuff like that. So that's why we needed some, some help from other cities that had already got it through.
I think the rest is very thorough. I was, I wanted clarification on who the animal control officer was. The only other one, there's a definition of kennel in here, item number thirteen, under definitions. And it says any place where four or more dogs whose ages are six months or older. But then I didn't see kennel referenced anywhere in the ordinances.
Yeah, it was.
I just want to be careful, I don't.
We originally were gonna try to see if they would hold dogs locally for us here, but we didn't get an opportunity to go down and talk to them because of the change. We had to have the vet there be able to approve it, that's why it was in limbo. To see if they would kennel dogs here locally for us.
I just don't want to target any households that have four or more dogs, so maybe we have to add a.
Right. It, it was designed to whether or not we could hold dog at, at a veterinary service, if they would do that for us.
That might need a little more clarification if we go that route.
Yeah, make it know that, wait a minute.
We, I mentioned to someone at some point about maybe we should put in a dog run at the shop for animals to be, and was strongly advised against that. If that dog dies in that.
Liability.
Yep, the liability. Yep, 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 yep. I just wanted to say, if anybody had that thought in their head. No.
Were the gentlers?
Yeah, I know, I thought about that, nope.
Any other comments on then, on where we're at? That it's, it's not gone stale, we are still working on it, and we'll continue to, or talk to Cedar Valley? All right, then we'll move on to this part-time public works position, your information is in there. These, I was not part of it, I believe Councilman Shans was, but these interviews did take place, I think. Guy, you're gonna handle this, and I, I hope, maybe you have a recommendation for us on that?
Yeah, it got pretty easy this morning. We did do two interviews, and I gave both candidates some skills tests on the equipment, and one candidate informed me this morning of another job opportunity that he thought he'd rather seek. So, since we only had two, that leaves one. So, I will recommend that we hire Kent Wright for the part-time public works position, and start him at the, at the entry level, fifteen, ten an hour. Step one, grade six, and he said he can start immediately, as soon as we get him to win for a drug test. Yep, yes, sir.
Okay, so there is a, a position profile within your council packet, as well as our adopted grade and step level for, that you can review there. His recommendation again is step, is grade six, step one, fifteen, ten for a starting salary, and you can also review the duties and items there if you want to, review that from your packet. Any, and it sounds like he said previous experience, it sounded like it might be a quick here.
Yeah, he was the city superintendent for ten years, and so.
So that's his recommendation. Comments from council on this? Any concerns? Okay, there's no concerns, I think we can do this. It is an approval, but I think we can do it with a sample. If there's no other concerns, then would seek a motion to move forward with his recommendation for the hiring of Kent as the part-time maintenance person for the city of Albernent. Well, let me say this, is there any other pending, do we need to do any other pending testing? So it's a conditional job offer, this is it, is everything done?
He just needs to pass a drug test, is all, yeah.
Okay, all right, pending the passing of the drug test, then the hiring of Kent at the starting position of fifteen, ten. Do we have a motion? Moved by Henderson, second by Shans, any other discussion on this?
I just want to make sure, he's aware that there's no guaranteed hours, but, okay, I, I assume so, but I just wanted to verify that.
I was number one on the, on the hit list when we started the interview, yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion carries, would you notify us, or at least let us know when the start date is, or whatever it's gonna be? All right, very good, thank you. All right, item number D, newest abatement. This has been an ongoing piece, we have also sent out some new notifications, trying to wrap this up. I think we're about done with this, it's something we've been working on throughout the year. We will revisit this again also next year as we, as, when the weather clears a little bit and reassess the entire city. But this is completing this initiative from twenty nineteen. Can you give us an update, Danielle, please, although we're out with these?
Yes, we did the nuisance abatement on the one property here in town, and we sent the invoice there. We need to either receive the payment or have a request or payment plan to finish up that process. And then we had a couple of abandoned houses within city limits that we sent notification on to let them know that that is a violation of city ordinance. And we asked the property owner to let us know their intentions for the properties. Both property owners reached out to us and let us know that their intention is to fix up the property to, for future rental purposes. So that's currently where that stands. But as of right now, both properties are still in the abandoned, what would be considered an abandoned state.
Okay, we've already had our public comment section, but I'm going to expand that a little bit. Any comments from the public and referenced any of the newest statement? Very good, all right, then that's where we stand with newest payment. Again, those notifications are out for the two property, the two properties that we're seeking for the abandoned, well, I don't call them abandoned structures necessarily, but structures that were, the letters have gone out to notify those owners. They have to come into compliance, or it could result, likely will result in seizure of those properties by the, the city.
The letter did not state that language, the letter stated.
But I want to make that clear, that that is an in result for properties that are considered abandoned. Okay, very good. Any comments from council?
Is that similar to the process for the other nuisances as far as requesting a hearing with the council? Or what is, what does that letter state, or was it like?
I apologize, so, when discussion about this process, the Iowa Code supersedes our ordinance, and we can refer to Iowa Code six fifty.
He's got it there, bring it up and show the criteria of what constitutes the property that is subject to seizure.
Whether it has any proper tax or special assessments, whether there are any utilities currently provided to the property, whether the building is unoccupied, and whether it's up to code fit for habitation. So basically, any of those criteria could bring, you know, could start this procedure.
There's the additional criteria.
And there's the additional.
It can be one or a combination of any of these, and we're not talking about somebody that didn't pay their utility bill for a month. We're talking about years.
Worth of, yeah.
It's been discussed, right. But process wise, so we've sent the notification, did, did we provide a timeline on?
This process would be different, this would be following this state code, it wouldn't follow our ordinance in, in that manner. This would be the city deciding to file a petition to.
That's right, okay.
Yeah, there's specific paperwork that goes through our city attorney, too.
Perfect, and I apologize, this was with our packet, and I didn't review it.
This was not in the packet, but this was in the.
Electronically with the, okay, I will take a look at it after. And publicly accessible, if someone wanted to review it.
Yeah, state code.
State, can you state it, just what?
Yeah, so the state code is Iowa Code six fifty-seven A dot ten A, petition by city for title to abandoned property.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on where we're standing, where there was close out of newest abatement for twenty nineteen? Very good, all right, then we'll move on to our last item, twelve, I don't think we're gonna get a deputy sheriff tonight, so. Onto twelve, yeah, I must have got tied up on something. Onto twelve E, the fire station project, an increased approval for MG. Onto 12E, the fire station project, an increased approval for MGA contract. This is also in your packet. This will require a motion, which I will seek here shortly. This is the change order agreement with MGA for the services prior to us bidding this out. This is based upon not only the spec items that we have in here, but also the changes that we made that allow for two types of bids to go out. One with the full version, and one with a scaled down. Our new total services agreement is on page two, and correct me if I'm wrong on any of these, Danielle, but $87,325, correct? Alright, so I'll need a motion to approve costs to Martin Gardner Architect in the amount of $87,325 for the fire station project. That's the new amount.
What was the original amount?
Do you have that number?
Fifty-five.
I might have the spreadsheet in a second. It's on a spreadsheet on that side. Bethany's always asking the hard questions.
Mom, just keeping you accountable here.
That's right.
We've got it here somewhere, we can.
And that was due to the overall cost of the project being increased from what we thought it was.
I thought it was like 50 or something. Do you have that spreadsheet?
Twenty from MSA, twenty or twenty-one, and fifties.
Oh, is it on that sheet? She should have it right on that spreadsheet. It's good we noted for the record, though.
It was 55,250.
55,250? Alright, then for the record there, and for our YouTube friends, 55,250 for the original amount. Amended amount, 87,325, which is what I'll need approved tonight, please.
And it looks like we've already had follow-up discussions with them, and we've gotten them to concede a little on this increase. Is that my understanding?
We had, they give us the original amount, and then, which was over this, and we asked for an itemized list with some discussion on reduction based upon, I wouldn't say arguments that we made, but based upon clarifications that we made. So, we did get a reduction based upon that, and we did get the itemized list. Yep.
Certification, this is not on top of the 55.
No, this is the new amount, correct. And it's not, it's not impossible that we won't see other change orders, too. And change orders can go up or down. So, once this, once the thing, or once the project is bid, of course, we'll have construction costs and things like that, but we may, we may see additional charges, too, if we keep making modifications to the architectural portion of it, so.
Is this one of those situations, I know oftentimes, we get bids from contractors for residential work, and they provide you a bid, but say you only get charged for the actual amount. This particular amount is for services, and there'll be no reduction for this amount, is that correct?
Yeah, I don't think you're going to see much change on here. This was based upon, when we give them the original information, what we wanted. Once they knew exactly what we wanted, then the process for drawing that up, putting the plans in place, and putting it out to bid, this is what those services cost.
Versus like a concrete contractor that can say it costs up to, but we only charge you.
You know, this is, this is for their services of work to get it out for bid.
Oh, it'll only come as they do the work.
I don't think we've paid them a whole lot as of yet, because we haven't done much, except for a few meetings and getting our work together.
But, now the big work is coming, where they do the actual design. So, there will be some bills coming here in the next couple of months, you know. And then, bid process will cost, too, so.
I make a motion, we accept the amended agreement for $87,325 with Martin Gardner Architecture.
Motion by Sarason.
Second.
Seconded by Menson. Any other discussion on this? Spin your funds, I'll need it by roll.
Counselor Henderson.
Aye.
Counselor Sean. Counselor Sarason, by Counselor Menson.
Aye.
Let the record reflect, it passed with one member not present. Alright, that completes.
It was consent agenda.
So, that's the annual financial report. I apologize, I forgot to mention it. It's just included for your record. It's due by December 1st, but you have to have it published before December 1st. It's already been published, doesn't need approval. It's more just for your information. It's a snapshot of our expenses from FY19.
That completes the item, the items that are on the agenda before I call for a motion to adjourn. Are there any other comments? We'll start on the right this time. Josh?
I don't have any further, you know.
Anyone else? Comments? I'll call for a motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Menson, seconded by Henderson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you for the seat.